Good evening and welcome to today's Board of Education meeting on April 25th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mrs. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting. Thank you very much. Number four on our agenda are the student board representatives, and we could start with Erin from Lyman Hall. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening. Last Wednesday, April 20th, the College and Career Center had a summer job fair, which was a success. And upcoming next week, on May 2nd, we are celebrating seniors' post-high school plans during lunch waves with pennant-making, a photo booth, and more. Seniors will come to school wearing apparel representing the school that they're going to next year. We are running a field trip to the Construction Career Day on May 4th. Next Friday, May 6th, is the junior prom. The theme is neon lights, and it will be at Monticello's. The junior class has been working hard to make their first prom a success. Also working hard is the senior class. Their prom is on May 27th at Anthony's Ocean View, and the theme is Garden of the Gods. They are excited to have their first normal prom. The counseling center is taking time to prepare juniors for the future and set them up for success. Counselors are meeting with juniors and their families to talk about plans for after high school. Students have an individual meeting to discuss their specific plans and steps they should be taking now to work towards that plan. International Celebration Night will be held on May 18th at the Spanish Community of Wallingford. This night will include activities, dance performances, and foods from different cultures. The National Honor Society is extending their tutoring program to help students study for AP tests and finals. And lastly, AP tests will be starting May 2nd and will last for the first two weeks of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. That was a great update. Lots of stuff going on this time of year. And the representative from Mark T. Sheehan, Aisha, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. So on April 7th, we had parent-teacher conferences. And then on the 8th, the Sheehan National Honor Society Leadership Committee held their annual leadership workshop, in which students selected by their teachers, typically in like lower-level classes, they were exposed to a day full of activities where they could enhance their natural leadership skills, including a speaker panel, a mock shark tank, and obstacle course. On April 21st, we welcomed Andy Sorkany, a Holocaust survivor, to speak to our 11th grade U.S. history students about his experience surviving the Holocaust. On the 23rd, the Sheehan NHS Service Committee held their long-anticipated Project Trash Tag, in which volunteers clean up trash all over Wallingford, including here at the town hall. And April 28th, we'll be holding our mock crash sponsored by the SAD Club in collaboration with Wallingford's first responders for juniors and seniors as part of Prom Promise Program. This day will also include College Signing Day, which will be held after school. And our junior prom will be on May 7th, and our senior prom will be May 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, a great time of year. Lots of activities happening, and it's great to see that again. Next on our agenda, we have, thank you ladies for coming. Next on our agenda, we have presentation and awards. And I will turn that over to Mrs. Belizzi, who has a very special award tonight on behalf of everybody.
Thank you and good evening. This evening, I would like to honor and recognize Mrs. Linda Lavelle, who has done a wonderful job with not only supporting me through the transition, but also supporting all of our Board of Education members, our central office staff, and all of Wallingford Public Schools. So I wanted to just take this time to say thank you. This week is Administrative Professional Day, and so I want to say thank you for all you have done to support all of us this year and in previous years. We thank you for all of your time and effort. You have worked tirelessly to make sure we have everything ready to go and are ready for all of our meetings and handling everything with our parents and all of us. So thank you very much, Linda. We appreciate all of your hard work. So thank you.
Speech. She would not be happy if we said speech and made her talk. For those who don't know, Mrs. Lavelle not only keeps central office moving at a speed that is pretty fast, but she organizes everything on behalf of the board. And she is absolutely amazing. She always has a smile. She is always pleasant. She never makes you feel like you're bothering her, even sometimes when I know I am bothering her. And every day should be administrative professionals today if you have a Linda Lavelle in your fort, taking care of you and holding down the fort. So thank you very much, Linda. You are truly amazing, and we really do appreciate you. Is there anybody else that wanted to say anything? Sure. Mr. Votto or Mrs. Costelli, you guys decide who goes first.
You'll go first.
So Linda, I just want to echo everything that Tammy just said. I forgot your last name. Mrs. Raccio, whatever. The formality of the, you know, last names over here. Okay. Miss Raccio. Everything she said. And to just reiterate, I'm sure you are under stress a lot, but it is never obvious. When I come in and ask for something or need something, you're just, you're, you are, I have your attention, no matter what. And I never feel like I'm imposing on you. And I'm sure oftentimes I am imposing on you. So I greatly appreciate everything you've done. You were fabulous when we were trying to plan Dr. Menzo's retirement, and I couldn't have done it without you. So, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you, too. I think I was chair when you were hired, Linda, way back when in the old office. And you've been very steady. You started off doing great, and you have continued, and you've carried us through a lot of, a lot of things. And I think this is very, very appropriate. Glad you did this. And we hope to have you around a little longer, quite a lot longer, actually.
Mr. Roth?
Yes. When I first came on board and I was introduced to you, I was thinking, oh, that's nice. Maybe she can be helpful. But you were beyond helpful. Anything I've ever asked you for, I got a nice smile and a yes, I'll have it for you. And you always have. Without you, several times, I would have been lost. I just want to thank you for your help.
Mr. Doring?
I'd also echo what everyone said. Ms. Lavelle, we really appreciate everything you do for our school district. You're always there to help with anything that's needed. Really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you so much. And next on our agenda is public comment. So I will read our public comment statement. "The Board of Education welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the Board and not to any individual Board member or individual member of the administration. Although the Board values and appreciates the input of the public, the Board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during public comment period. Instead, the Board and administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period, and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting." Is there anybody here for public comment tonight? Adelaide, please come up and just state your name and address for the record. Thanks for coming.
Adelaide Cogford, 35 Weefal tree Road, here in Wallingford. I guess, I assume you can guess why I'm here. One more time, I'll ask the Board to please ask the lawyers if we can put a very general statement like Mr. Votto suggested last meeting in the new bus contract. Just maybe two more, two more things that I didn't write in the email. I hope you all got it this morning and had a chance to look through it. I tried to keep it short. There's so much more to say. But anyway, so one thing, if you are concerned about reliability, obviously, the staffing is an issue, and it's really hard to work around that. But electric buses have so much less maintenance and so much less downtime. So that would be a plus for reliability. Just keep that in mind, too. And the other thing, I'm not asking anybody, neither any service contractor, nor the Board, nor the district, to buy electric buses out of the blue just for fun. I know that's prohibitive because the costs are higher than normal buses. All I'm asking is that you please consider adding a short paragraph, a short line, a general interest statement to the new contract that will last, hopefully, five years, which is a time when a lot of things will happen. And I want us to be ready to make the transition to electric buses. So I ask you, one more time, please consider a very general statement. I might have overshot last time a little bit, but like Mr. Votto suggested, a very general statement. Please instruct Mr. Peron to go to the lawyers and ask if we can do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Roth, followed by Mr. Votto. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? With that, we are in executive session. Education meeting, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
That was Mr. Roth and Mr. Votto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are out of executive session. I will, we have quite a long consent agenda tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.49, 7.51 through 7.66, and 7.68 through 7.79, and 7.81 through 7.106 or .06. Can I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
That's Mr. Doring and Mr. Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Those consent items have been approved. Items removed from the consent agenda. The first one is 7.50, and that is the policy on student detention. And Mrs. Latour, there was a question about that, and the latest language as to whether or not parents will definitely be informed if there is a detention, especially if it's during the day. And I may not have had the most up-to-date copy when I read it, so...
So if you look at the policy itself, it speaks to when a student is detained at school during the school day or beyond the normal dismissal time, the teacher and/or administrator shall ensure that appropriate consideration has been given to matters of pupil transportation, parent guardian notification, traffic conditions, weather, and other extenuating circumstances. And then when you also look at the regulation, it speaks to the lunch detention component, which states students may serve a lunch detention as a disciplinary consequence. It is expected that school officials contact parents prior to the lunch detention occurring. So I don't know if that is between the policy and the regulation. It speaks to parent notification anytime you are keeping a student either during the school day or after the school day in the policy form, but then also specifically notes in the regulation about the lunch detention.
That is perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. I did not have that changed. I was the one that pulled that off. Any other questions about that policy? Okay. So I guess I will now entertain a motion to approve 7.50, policy 5144.11, student detention.
Actually, I did have a question.
Sure.
Are you saying that, now that I'm thinking about it, the lunch detention, the parent has to be told about that as well?
Yes.
That day?
Before it's given.
All right. So the child did something wrong in the morning, would they be given that lunch detention that day or the following day?
So per the policy changes that we made, they would need, the parents would need to be notified prior to giving the lunch detention.
So it could be that day or the next day?
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised they have to be notified about a lunch detention.
I think it's just good practice personally.
All right.
You know, when I asked the administrators what their process was, they all do notify. So it works.
All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure.
I have a question now.
Sure.
By notify, is it direct contact?
It says notification in our policy and regulation.
So it could be an email.
It could be an email. It could be voicemail.
Okay. Doesn't have to be that they...
It doesn't say that they have to get a hold of the parent.
Got it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. I think I have the motion. I need a first and a second.
Second.
Okay. So the first is Mr. Roth, and the second is Mrs. Costelli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That one carries. The next one that was pulled from consent is 7.67. This was the approval/adoption/revision of policy 5134, the dress code. And this is yours, Mr. Votto.
Oh, I'm just going to reiterate what I had said at the last meeting. This is the one that allows for hats and hoodies, hoods from sweatshirts to be on during the school day. And I still would like to state my opinion on that, that I don't understand why students have to wear their hoods from their sweatshirts on their head during the school day. I know the rule says that they are allowed to as long as the hood falls behind the ears, so that pods, typically if they're called, can be seen. And at the last meeting, I, what I said, and I'll say it again, I think that just gives another burden for the teacher, another, another job for the teacher to do when the children walk into the classroom. They have to kind of walk around, make sure the sweatshirt hoods are back far enough, number one. Number two, is every teacher, there are a lot of teachers on hall duty, so that when children walk back and forth from one class to another, are they watching students to make sure the hood is behind the ear? It just seems impractical to me. And call me old school, I don't think it's appropriate for anybody to wear a hat or, or a hoodie in a public building, in a building like that. But anyhow, I just thought I'd voice my opinion on that again, and hopefully, all these board members have agreed with me now, and they'll all vote that way, not to allow the hoods on the children's head during the school day. So I guess we have to vote on that. Or has anybody else had that?
Madam Chair, any other discussion? Mrs. Costelli?
Thank you. Yeah, upon reflection, after our last meeting, I have moved to the, to your corner, Mr. Votto, and I do support not allowing them to wear the hoodies up. I would support that, not to allow them to have the hoodies up, at least not in class. I don't know about the hallways, but at least not in class.
Mr. Roth?
I just have a question as how we're voting. If we vote yes, we vote yes to keep the policy the way it's written. We vote no means we have to go back and change the policy to possibly not allow for hoods and hats.
We would be, there's no motion out there yet, but when we take the motion, it would be to adopt the policy as written.
Thank you.
Can I just point out that that language is in the regulation, not in the policy? So if you look at the regulation 5132A, it speaks to, under basic dress code 1E, hoodies. The policy itself does not get that specific.
So it's in 7.68 that we just approved via consent agenda?
Correct.
Not 7.67 that was removed.
Correct. I mean, I think, you know, to be honest, quite frankly, the intent is there, that there is a question about this. So I'm not going to quabble over the little "A" that's between them. Just but for when you do make your motion, you should state that it is the regulation. And, you know, you have the option, because this is the third and final read, to change the language through a majority vote. If you want to strike out the last sentence in 1E that just states hoodies must allow the face and ears to be visible to school staff.
But that would be in 7.68 that we just approved?
Correct.
Okay. So we would have to put that back on a future agenda for modification?
Correct. Technically, yes.
Okay. So what we would do then is if we did not want hoodies, we would vote against 7.67, and then that, both the policy and regulation would not be in sync and would have to come back in front of the Board for future edits and considerations, as is the case with another policy later on in the list of policies.
The other policy later on that was not approved through consent is just a policy. There is no corresponding regulation to that one, so we're fine with that. This is the only one that has the regulation, that has the wording that you're concerned with.
So can I just, have you ever tried to wear a hoodie showing your ears? That means you have to like, you're literally halfway down your head. And if, let me tell you, if they're going to be able to do that, God willing, let them. If they really are going to be that committed to having their hoodie up, or they have drawn the string, or trying, we've made it clear, we want to see their face and ears, right? And I may not want to know that, I don't want them, I mean, I think the point is, we just don't want them covering like their whole face and hiding. You have some kids that have anxiety that like to have their hoods up. I get that. So, but trying to, we've made it, I think, very clear that we want to be able to see their face, and we want to see their ears. And I think at that point, if they really are that successful in trying to keep their hood up, they've got a really weird head shape, I guess, because it's not that easy to keep it, I mean, and you can see their face. And I think that's kind of what the, you know, we want to make sure that they're not hiding behind, and they're not having their ear pods in, right? And I, and I think the regulation is fairly clear around that, right? Mr. Roth?
Yeah. I had a parent call me up, and her daughter goes to one of the middle schools, and she suffers from anxiety. And she's comfortable with the hood on, she's not comfortable without it. Also, if the reason that we're doing this, not wearing the hood, is because of earbuds, why don't we just make a regulation and a policy, the earbuds are not allowed in the hall at any time, and let the teachers, if they see an earbud, stop the student.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Since this is something that the teachers themselves will have to monitor and enforce, have you received any feedback from teachers, or do you have any teachers telling you that they hate the hoodies in their class, and they really wish they could be enforcing no hoodies? Or have you heard from the teachers, you know, boy, am I glad that you don't have a policy for hoods, because that would be driving me crazy all day correcting students?
No, I have not heard from any of the teachers. As I, I shared, whether it was that policy or the first instructional committee meeting, I did ask the building administrators what their thoughts were on this particular one. We had one administrator who was not comfortable with hats or hoodies, but the rest were fine with the language as it's written.
Mr. Votto?
I think our, one of my concerns is, as, in response to Donna, is that, yeah, are they going to keep it back like that? That is hard to do. So they will pull it forward, I feel. And I think the other thing is, teachers are concerned or have enough issue with cell phones, I think, and whether kids have them out, where are they when they're in class. And now we have to worry about hoods and these ear things being able to be seen. I mean, I just think it's, why go through all that bother? Why would you have to monitor whether a kid's hood is far back enough, number one, and number two, they already have to deal, like I said, with cell phones. I believe they can't have them on in class. Is that correct?
That is correct, unless they're directed to by the teacher for the purposes of learning.
And we all know that's not a very easy thing to monitor. I'm sure there are many students who still have their phones on them, and maybe on and whatnot. I mean, those of us who are teachers, we know that that happens. I just think it's another thing that we, that we have to give the teachers something to do or to watch out for. And I just think it's silly. And I think it's interesting that one of our administrators doesn't approve of hats or hoods. So there's got to be something said for that. But anyhow.
So I will entertain a motion to approve policy 5132, dress code as written.
So moved.
That's Mr. Roth and Ms. Regan. And when you're ready, Mrs. Lavelle, can you just do a roll call on this one? It might be easier than you trying to figure out...
Six, seven?
Yeah, 7.50, 7.67.
7.67, dress code.
Not 7.68, the regulation.
The regulation we just passed under consent.
Right. So are we going to address that?
We did?
Yes.
Yes, we already did. That's...
We passed that.
We're going to pull that back, or what are we going to do with the regulation?
We would have to bring that back to a different board meeting and put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Because that's what needs to be, that's what...
Then we would put both 6.7 and 6.8 on a future agenda if this doesn't pass.
Right.
We can bring them both back.
Okay. Are you saying we took consent on 6.8 before this meeting?
No, just like 10 minutes ago.
We took consent? I didn't say yes or no.
No, it's on the consent agenda.
We passed the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
You made, you have to pull the wrong...
Because I made a mistake, and I pulled the wrong one. Got it. Okay.
At any point, any board member can ask for a policy or a regulation to go to Policy Committee if they feel like it needs to be changed, and then it'll go through the same process that we've done for all the other policies.
Okay. Mrs. Costelli?
For 7.6...
The motion is for 7.67.
7.67, yes. Yes, as written.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
No.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we have one more item that was removed from tonight's consent agenda, and that would be item 7.80, and that was the approval of the proposed adoption/revision of policy 6115, ceremonies and observations. And Mr. Votto, that's you.
I don't have the policy in front of me. The one, there is, what line is it that I'm concerned about with the pledge? A child can stand or they can sit. Can you read that line for me, please?
Sure. The paragraph under, it's the last paragraph of the policy on page two, Pledge of Allegiance. The last sentence says, "If a student chooses not to participate, the student may stand or sit in silence."
Okay. I have been thinking about this one as you, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, my concern as well. And I think in the meantime, Mrs. Latour did talk to our attorney and got some type of a explanation of this. Could you share that with us first before I go on?
So after our last meeting, it was requested that I speak to our attorneys at Shipman Goodwin about whether or not you could stipulate in your policy that students must stand regardless of whether they recite the Pledge of Allegiance. In our, in her response, the attorney from Shipman stated that while every school system has to have an opportunity for students to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, that it is correct that they do have the... that it is correct that they do have the right, students, to sit or stand during the pledge. You cannot force students to stand. She recommended that perhaps changing that last sentence to, "Students may refrain from reciting the pledge or standing during its recitation as long as they are not disruptive" might be more palatable for the board who have strong thoughts about this particular sentence. But it is confirmed through case law in particular that you cannot force a student to stand during the pledge. That it's standing is symbolic speech and students cannot, they have the right, the freedom of expression to stand or sit. Likewise, you would not be able to, it would be not recommended and not be able to send the student out into the hallway, which is not only a supervision issue, but also through case law proven not to be allowable.
Well, I personally, we have to vote on this. And regardless of the law, I, I just want to make a, take a stand, if you will bear with me, that I think this law is wrong. But that doesn't mean we can't speak against it. And I feel that this shows for a child in a classroom to not recite the pledge or even have to, have the ability to sit and possibly turn around and talk to somebody that else, who else is sitting while the pledge is being recited, is just so disrespectful. And I just want to go on record to say that. And I understand the lawyer saying or the attorney's interpretation that, you know, civil, the First Amendment gives you the right. But you know, folks, there are a lot of, there are 10 bills of right, Bill of Rights. And they always don't apply to children. The second one says the right to bear arms. Well, you're not gonna give a five-year-old a gun. You have the right to, this, one is on search. A search warrant is needed to search a person's possessions or their home. Schools can search a child's backpack or person. So you see what I'm saying? The Bill of Rights does sometimes apply to students and sometimes it doesn't. This is wrong. We use the flag to put on coffins. We use the flag, we put the flag at half-staff in memory of someone who passed or to symbolize an event in American history. And to, and, and today, they want to teach our children all kinds of things, starting in kindergarten, that are, to me, inappropriate. Yet we can't tell, we can tell a child they don't have to say the Pledge of Allegiance and indeed can sit down instead of even standing up. I had suggested, when I talked to Mrs. Latour about this, put them out in the hall or at least put them in the doorway. And she's saying that that can't happen. I'm sure we're gonna continue to vote for this the way it is because we have to, because it's the law supposedly. But I would just hope that people give this some more thought and start writing to our legislators if they feel that, like I do, the importance of the Pledge of Allegiance. You know, I've gone to more hockey, lacrosse games and field hockey games than I probably want to. And I have to tell you, every time they, they play the National Anthem, every single person in that rink or on that field in those bleachers stands, looks at the flag and puts their hand over their heart. There's nothing more touching than to see that. And now to have a classroom of 15 kids and to see five of them perhaps sit down and turn their heads maybe and not look at the flag, to me, is so disgraceful and disrespectful. And I just wanted to go on record for saying that. And unfortunately, that we have to vote for this.
Mrs. Passeretti and then Mrs. Costelli.
So being on the policy committee, when this came before the policy committee, I was opposed to this policy. In general, I'm opposed to making a policy when we already have a law that covers what is said. The Connecticut General Statute says that we are required to provide an opportunity once a day for our students to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And then part two is that it is voluntary. I think by adding the wording that says, "Students may sit" or "Students do not need to stand", that is an invitation for students to do so. I think that we don't need that wording. I do believe that it's, would be beneficial to add something after the word voluntary that says that students may not be disruptive during that time. But I, I agree with Mr. Vado. I have had many family members that fight, fought for this country. And I'm personally offended when people don't do the Pledge of Allegiance. But I, I, I was against this policy from the beginning. I do not believe we need those words, even though case law says that we can't make students stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. That's fine, but we don't need to have it in our policy. It's an invitation for students to do so. If they feel like they need to sit, they can refer to the law. I don't want it in our policy. Thank you.
Mrs. Costelli.
I just want to say, Mike, I totally agree with everything you said. It breaks my heart. I don't get upset when people are talking at a ballgame while the, the, the "God Bless America" is being, being sung. You know, pay attention for a minute. It's not, it is disrespectful. And, and we should all be respecting the greatness of this country that we are so privileged to live in. So I totally agree with you. However, we do, I feel it is the law. We do have to follow it and we have to approve it, as is.
Can I just add something? I understand that people have very strong opinions about this. I understand people's respect for the pledge, our flag, our country. The purpose of having the language in the policy, though, is also, quite honestly, transparency for our staff, for our families, for our parents. If you do a simple search, you see school system after school system who didn't have clear policy language that then made a decision, a staff member or otherwise made a decision to not allow a student to sit or to go out in the hall. And it becomes a, a legal matter. And, you know, we don't want that for anybody. We don't want that for our students. We don't want that for our staff to have, not have clarity with what the expectation is. So while I understand people's strong opinions, I think my goal for our policy is it, for it to be straightforward and transparent. And that's what this does. So the board, you know, I, I think having the, the language where Shipman tweaked it a little bit is a little bit more broad than Cabe's original language if that makes the board feel a little bit more comfortable. I understand not everyone's gonna be completely comfortable. But I do think we owe it to our schools, to our staff members, to have transparent language in our policies. So I just wanted to add that. Mr. Ross.
Yeah. First of all, I, I just don't think that this is a major issue in our school. I don't think we've ever, ever, ever had 25% of our students refuse to stand. I think if we have 1/10 to 1% of our students, which would be one in the student body. I, I go to almost every athletic event there ever is. And I've been in the schools, events in the school, and I have never, I repeat, never seen a student refuse to stand or an adult. So it definitely, I mean, to say that there's 25% of the students in a classroom want to sit, there isn't 1/10 to 1%.
Mr. Vado and then Mrs. Latour, I was gonna ask if you can reread the Shipman and Goodwin proposed change.
Well, first of all, Ray, have you been in every elementary school classroom to make that assertion? I don't think you have.
No, but I don't think you're gonna find five out of 20s just sitting.
And secondly, I liked what Mrs. Passeretti said about the fact that it's, it's sort of setting, you're sort of opening up a can of worms by putting those words in there. I, I think, what did you say, the first?
Invitation.
An invitation to it. I, I, I like less. I know what you're saying, Mrs. Latour, about giving teachers guidance. But I think you could do that at the beginning of the year at the teachers' faculty meeting. I don't think it necessarily belongs in there. But as Mrs. Raciio requested, I'd like to hear what you had.
I said voluntary but must not be disruptive during that time.
So our attorney recommended language would be that students may refrain from reciting the pledge or standing during its recitation as long as they are not disruptive. That was Shipman's version of the last sentence. Cabe's version is, "If a student chooses not to participate, the student may stand or sit in silence." So it's really up to the board to decide which sentence they would like to go with. I...
I'm sorry, can you read the first one again?
Sure. Shipman's recommended language would be, "Students may refrain from reciting the pledge or standing during its recitation as long as they are not disruptive."
When you take the word "sit" out of it, you've closed the invitation. You are, you're giving them an option, right? So, and it's really, all about, this is just about semantics because it's really saying the same thing. And quite honestly, it's how, when people read it, it's how you read it. When you say you can voluntarily stand, that is a, in my opinion, less of an invitation to say, "Or you can sit." If they hear, "Or you can sit," they're gonna sit. Not necessarily, but there's an invitation there. I think it's really about physically seeing those words in there. I don't, I'm with everybody else on this, in the same mindset. But, you know, it is a legal requirement. And so we just have to soften it as much as we can without eliminating it.
I personally do like the language that sets the expectation that the students are not to be disruptive. And so I, I would personally go with the, is that the Shipman version?
It is the Shipman version, yes.
Okay. So maybe we can go through the board and see if board members prefer, some board members may not like either one of these. I understand that. But if there is a preferred version of that sentence that Mrs. Latour has read to us a couple times, either as it is now or the version that talks about not being disruptive, we can decide as a board to either leave it or modify it. And then we'll move to a motion to either accept or not accept this policy. We're in a policy, right? We're in a policy, yes. Mr. Doring, which version did you like?
I liked the version that says not being disruptive.
Okay, Mrs. Costelli?
Yeah, I can go with either, but the not disruptive is probably better.
I prefer the Shipman, the first version without, yep.
I like the version as is written now.
As is written?
I prefer the Shipman version.
As is written?
Oh, no, no, the second, second.
Right, the Shipman one is the one about not being disruptive and does not say the word sitting?
Correct.
I obviously prefer the one that does not say sit, that the children can sit and that instead they just should not be disruptive during that time.
I don't like either one.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I have to go along with that.
Okay, totally understood. So I will entertain a motion then to approve policy, I gotta get my papers here.
6115.
6115, which is Agenda Item 7.80. With the only change being, instead of, under the Pledge of Allegiance, instead of the language, "If a student chooses not to participate, the student may stand or sit in silence", is removed and replaced with?
"Students may refrain from reciting the pledge or standing during its recitation as long as they are not disruptive."
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second?
Okay, I think.
Point of order.
We have a first and a second. Yes, Mr. Ross.
All right, as written, if we change it, do we have to go back and go through the three readings again?
No, this is your third and final opportunity to make a change.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No problem. So Mrs. Lavelle, that was a first by Ms. Reagan and a second by Mrs. Costelli. Okay, so we're good? Do you want to, could you do a roll call for this? That way you don't have to guess who's speaking when. That's hard to do.
So we have, Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Mrs. Raciio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With the revised language, thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Latour. I know that you put a lot of time researching that and going through it both with the Cabe folks and with Shipman and Goodwin. So thank you for that. I think we all agree in the sentiment and how we feel and, and how our children would act. Unfortunately, we can't. We do need to make sure that the teachers have the tools that they need in the classroom. That was our last item removed from the consent agenda. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, I will turn it over to Mrs. Roscoe to update us on correspondence.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raciio. We have a few gifts that I would like to acknowledge. And I'm going to start with a donation of seed packets for the Earth Day program. It's from the Country Flower Farms, Paul and Cheryl Schatzman. And the value was $3,355. Thank you so much for that. Our next one is from the Chick-fil-A Restaurant. And it is a sponsorship of the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy for the 2021-2022 school year. That was in the amount of $5,000. And then also to accompany that, Chick-fil-A also donated catering in the amount of $6,000 for that same Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy program for the 2021-2022 school year. So again, thank you so much for these continued donations that help to really add to our experiences for our students and just continue to make the education in Wallingford really running smoothly and giving our students a lot of opportunity. So thank you so much.
And that's it? Thank you. Awesome. And we are now moving into some committee reports. And I know people have been very busy. So, Mr. Ross, can you give us an update on the ACES governing board?
Thank you, Ms. Raciio. ACES had their meeting on April 21st. And there, there was a report given on the new IEP and Connecticut SED program. They had a discussion with their teachers about it. We got an update on the learning walks, which have been very successful. An update on what's happening coming up with summer school. And the approved, approval was given on the sale of 51 Trumbull Street to the Artists Cooperative for $800,000. They bought that property a few years back for $300,000 plus. And now it's worth 800. And the artists were able to raise funding so it's gonna stay as it is now, an artist cooperative. The financial interim report was approved. The financial interim report was approved. There were 23 new cases of COVID as of 4/4/22, down from 304 cases of COVID for the month of January. We had an executive session to discuss the director's evaluation, and we approved the director's contract. That's it.
Thank you very much. That was a busy meeting, and I know it was a long one. Thank you for attending, Mr. Ross. The next item is the Business Think Tank. Superintendent Belizzi?
Yes, we did not meet this month. We are going through some restructuring with some changes here at Central Office in terms of our administration, and so we are holding off on our meetings right now, and we'll reconvene once we have our new CTE coordinator onboard.
Awesome. And the STEM Steering Committee?
We did not have a meeting last month.
Thank you. And the Systemwide PTAC update. I spoke too soon.
We did not have a meeting this month. Our next Systemwide PTAC meeting is on May 17th, and it will be virtual, I think. I think those are still allowed to be virtual after decisions are made, so I think it's virtual.
Okay. And the Special Education PTAC update. I don't know if you, either if you have an update or if you'd like me to share. I will say that it was a hybrid meeting, and there were parents in attendance, and Mr. Doring was there also. And there were parents in person and online, so it was a little bit of both, and it was interesting. It was definitely nice to be back at 100 South Turnpike for that.
Mrs. Turner, who is attending a conference right now, did share some notes with me that she asked me to share, so I'm just going to read what she had shared. She said that on September, on April 7th, we hosted a hybrid PTAC meeting. It was a huge success with parents and staff joining the meeting both in person and virtually. Mackenzie Brockovich presented on supporting your child's mental health at home. The presentation was well received by all of those in attendance. Parents also learned about Team Impact. Team Impact is an NCAA-approved program in which children with significant health needs or special needs are matched with a college team. The college team welcomes the child to become part of their team. They attend a signing day, receive acknowledgement of their participation, and join the team in many team events, including practices and games. On May 5th, Special Education Department and the PTAC are sponsoring the Family Resource Fair. Our families are welcome. The fair will take place at Mark T. Sheehan High School from 5:00 to 7:00. We have over 30 vendors committed for the evening, and families from everywhere in Connecticut are welcome. So we're looking forward to that fair on the 5th.
It is so nice to have that back. Awesome. The next on our agenda is the Plan of Conservation and Development, and I do not believe there's any update there. And after that, we have the Food Service Strategic Planning Committee. Is there anything that you'd like to share with us, Mr. Bondi? No meeting in April, okay. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, Ms., I'm sorry, Dr. Thompson?
The committee's actually meeting tomorrow for our April meeting. It'll be a virtual meeting, and we continue to gain members and work on our vision statement.
Awesome, thank you. And Mr. Deptula or Mr. Vado, the Facility Steering Committee?
I was not able to be at the last meeting, so...
Superintendent Belizzi called the meeting to order at 4:00 p.m. and informed us that Chairman Vado would not be able to make the meeting. So the first matter of business was a Lyman Hall student wanted to present a capstone project on solar. It was very informative. He presented a lot of interesting facts and figures that people generally aren't familiar with. And the interesting thing about his capstone project was, it was unbiased. You know, so many times when we hear arguments for things like solar energy, somebody's leaning in one direction or the other, this student presented basically an equal argument on going in each direction, because we all know that it's not the end-all as far as energy conservation, especially in the town of Wallingford where the rates are half of what they are anywhere else. Moving on to the next item, it was, we wanted to talk about the role of the committee, but because Chairman Vado was not present, we decided to table that till the following meeting. Then we went on to the facility study, brief discussion about that. That is moving forward. It was Silver Petricelli won that bid award, and we had a brief discussion about what was expected from us, who they would meet with as far as admin in the system, and when the delivery date would be, which is anticipated to be this September. I know everyone can't wait for that study to come out. September, yeah, I would think it would probably be the end of September. We did have a brief discussion about the safety of the turf. Kathy brought it up, and I mentioned that as it stands right now, I feel that it's probably safer than a grass field. It's, there isn't a lot of fibers left in that field, but right now I think it would pass an impact study. And we closed the meeting at 4:30.
Thank you. I do have one question on the facilities. Because of the nature of the timeline, is that a committee that is going to meet in July and August, or is that from June, we don't, you don't go back till September?
So I think we could continue. I think that's something for us as a committee to talk about and decide if we want to continue to move forward in July and August. As it stands right now, we are in the process of conducting school tours. We're setting up meetings for that to happen at the end of this week and next week, where Silver Petricelli is going to come in and meet with our administrators and just do a quick tour. They are going to be asking for them to provide an update on their needs. These are all of our schools, so not just the middle and high, which have been done in the past, but also the elementary buildings, also Central Office, Adult Ed, anything that we're looking to incorporate as well. So there could potentially be things that we'd like to discuss as we move through. So I don't think it's, I think it's a little bit too early to decide definitely, but it may be something we continue moving forward with, to have some discussions.
Okay. I just didn't know how they'd get to that report in September, if they're just kind of left on their own at this point, so...
Right, they'll continue to meet with myself in the Central Office.
I know, you're around all summer, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Castelli?
Yeah, I just want to make a correction. Record Journal reported that this facility study included four elementary. I just want it, the public who maybe pay attention to understand that it is all eight, it's not just four. That was a typo, I guess.
Thank you. Didn't even know they did an article on it. Thank you. Next is the Cabe Report, and I'm actually going to defer that. Mrs., or I'm sorry, Superintendent Belizzi is going to talk a little bit more about the virtual, potential virtual meetings and how that's going to impact. I know Cabe sent information out to all of us last week, so we will talk about that under instruction. There is no old business this evening, so we are now on to instruction with Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you, Mrs. Raciio. So tonight we have quite a few items on the Instructional Committee business for tonight. The first order of business under Instructional Committee business is Item Number 12.1, Superintendent's Non-Renewal Recommendation. And at this time, we will hear from Superintendent Belizzi.
Okay, so these are names that we, they are non-tenure teachers that we are recommending for a non-renewal, based on the Connecticut State statute. So we have already informed our teachers, our administrators have met with all teachers that are up for non-renewal, and have provided them with a letter that states that it's a budgetary concern, and so they are well aware that their names will be brought forward this evening. Oh, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, hold on. Okay. In my capacity as Superintendent of Schools, I recommend that Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the attached non-renewal list effective at the end of 21-22 school year, in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, and that the Board authorize me to furnish written notice of action. And see the list of names below, so we have a list attached to this of teachers to be non-renewed. You should know that the above-named teachers have been advised that I intend to make this recommendation. If the Board of Education takes action on my recommendation, the teachers have the right, under Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, to request the reasons for the Board's action to non-renew their contracts of employment. Further, I also recommend that I be authorized and instructed to communicate notice of this action by the Board to the affected teachers and to respond for the Board, for the Board, to any appropriate requests that may be forthcoming from the teachers for their representatives as provided in the teacher tenure law.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Belizzi.
You're welcome.
Based on Superintendent Belizzi's recommendation, I would like to make a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the non-renewal list as submitted at the end of the 2021-2022 school year, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. I further move that the Superintendent of Schools be directed to communicate this action of the Board in writing to the affected teachers, and that the Superintendent be authorized to respond on behalf of the Board to any requests for a hearing, if required by law or for other information which may be forthcoming from the teachers or the representatives pursuant to the applicable provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, and that the Superintendent be directed that in any response for a hearing, if hearing is required by law, indicate that such hearing is to be before the Board of Education. Thank you. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, the next order of business under Instructional Committee is Item Number 12.3, which is the Approval of Acceptance of Retirements. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Eileen Ziegler, effective June 30th, 2022. Eileen Ziegler has been a special education teacher since September 2020 for a total of two years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The second retirement, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Dawn Morris, effective June 30th, 2022. Dawn Morris has been a special education teacher since August 2015 for a total of seven years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next order of business is Item Number 12.4, the Approval of Acceptance of Resignation. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Sean Caviston, effective May 8th, 2022. Sean Caviston has been a school psychologist since August of 2016. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next order of business for Instructional Committee, we have Number 12.5, the Approval of High School Graduation Date and Last Day of School. The proposed date is Wednesday, June 15th, 2022. I would like to make a motion that the Board approve the high school graduation date and last day of school being Wednesday, June 15th, 2022. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is 12.6, we have the Approval of the Board of Education's Schedule of Meetings for February 2023 through January 2024. In your packets for tonight, you should have received the new schedule for the upcoming Board of Education meeting, and meetings starting February of 2023. I would like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education's Schedule of Meetings for the timeframe of February 2023 through the duration of January 2024. Motion seconded by Mr. Vado. Any discussion?
I have discussion.
Mrs. Raciio?
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. So the schedule of meetings does speak to the Instructional Committee meeting and the Operations Committee meeting being held via Google Meet, and we're jumping ahead a little bit to the next Agenda Item, but I do think that there is, it warrants a discussion about, from the Board, as to their preference, assuming that the legislation passes, both the House and Senate, and is signed into law, that would remove the sunset date of April 30th. It would allow us, as a Board, to take consensus if we wanted to have those committee meetings in a virtual environment, still obviously allowing public participation as we do for all of our meetings, but this would be the time that we would think about it as a Board, if we want to continue for committee meetings, to have those in a virtual environment via Google Meet.
So we are jumping ahead a little bit, but...
But it's in here.
I can withdraw, I can withdraw my motion, and then do you want to table this until we know for sure what, how the legislature plays out?
Mrs. Belizzi?
Sure, we definitely can. Right currently, it's set to expire on, or sunset on April 30th. We are just waiting for a final word as it goes through, as Mrs. Raciio said, to see if it will continue. There is, there are recommendations out there that it continues the way it is, that we have the option of continuing in person or virtual through July of 2023, but it has not been finalized. We did check today, Mrs. Lavelle and I, with Shipman, and they have no word yet. It has not been finalized. I mean, they still have a few more days, but I think they may wait till the last minute. So we can definitely table this and bring it back if you'd like, once we have some final, a final decision made, which should be before Saturday.
Okay. So I would like to withdraw my motion that I made previously, and I instead would like to make a motion to table the approval of the Board of Education's Schedule of Meeting for February 2023 through January 2024, until the next Board of Ed meeting, which will be held on Monday, May 23rd of 2022. There's a lot of dates in there, but you get the idea. Mr. Vado?
Not that it really matters, but whether we have virtual or not, aren't those going to be the meeting dates?
Those dates will be the dates, yes. Whether they're in person or virtual, it will not matter.
Well, because it makes a notation at the bottom saying that these meetings will be held via Google Meet unless otherwise noted, so we'd be, we'd be approving this as it's written tonight.
Okay.
I'm open, I'm open to, I'm open to...
No, I don't have that piece of paper in front of me.
There's a motion to table this till next time unless...
Mrs. Belizzi, do we have any requirement to get it to the town by a certain date?
No, we have time.
Okay.
We do have time, and so we can table it if you choose. The other thing is that, you know, if you look at the sentence, the Instructional Committee and the Operations Committee meetings will be held via Google Meet unless otherwise noted. We can always make changes to this moving forward, and changes to the meeting. So if something does change and it doesn't continue to be the option of being virtual, we can change that, even after we approve these dates as they are, even with the language in here.
So we can approve it as is right now and make changes?
We could.
Administratively?
Yes.
Would we be able to add the time, because those are a different time than the Board of Ed meeting here at Town Council Chambers?
Yes, we can, correct?
Okay, so as long as the time's on the agenda, we'd be okay. I'm fine with this. I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, if, if it is the desire of the Boards to continue with committee meetings being virtual and still allow public participation, then I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, that that was what we would be doing. Mrs. Castelli?
So couldn't we just modify the motion? What happened? Hello? Okay. Couldn't we just modify the motion to indicate, based on the decision of the state, as to whether or not virtual meetings will be allowed to continue? Just put it in the motion, and then we can do it tonight, we don't have to postpone this.
So, so I'm going to withdraw that. Mrs. Lavelle, it's a good thing that we celebrated you tonight. So, yeah. So, here we go again, right? Okay, I'm going to withdraw my... Okay, I'm going to withdraw my previous motion. Mrs. Castelli, I'll let you, I'll let you say exactly what you just said, and I'll let you, I'll let you do that motion.
I, I will make a motion that we, that we accept the Board of Education, the annual calendar of meetings from February 2023 through January 2024, with the added note that, based on the, our instructional and operational committee meetings will be virtual unless the state removes that ability come this April 30th. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Can, I know this isn't in here, but is it appropriate? We talked about timing on this, and maybe this is for down the road. Can we talk about changing the times of the virtual meetings from 6:00? I know, I don't know why we went to 6:00 PM. Is it possible to put everything at like 6:30? I just, I know some of us sometime like have the bolt to get into those meetings. It's just something to consider, to have them all at the same time, rather than 6:00 and 6:30. It's just something to consider. I don't know if that's what we want to work and talk about now, but maybe going forward, we can talk about when we want to have those meetings.
Mrs. Raciou, do you want to address that?
We can definitely, I think what Mrs. Lavelle said is that the meeting times can be addressed through the agendas.
Okay.
So, I do realize, I think it was the previous Board, they were at 6:30, and they came back to 6:00 because people wanted to be out a little earlier, and should try to be, try to finish at an earlier time. So, it's the, it doesn't matter to me. It's the preference of the Board. So, we could definitely bring that to a committee and put it on as an agenda item to discuss.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And then we did skip ahead a little bit, but the last thing on the Instructional Committee business agenda for tonight, 12.7, says discussion and possible approval to continue virtual committee meetings. We are not going to approve anything tonight because the legislation has not approved anything, so there's nothing for us to prove, but we can certainly have a discussion about that. And Mrs. Belizzi, I know you spoke a little bit earlier about this, if you can talk more.
Sure. So, as I stated earlier, we are waiting to hear the final decision. It does sunset right now with the ability for us to decide to have in person, to have them virtual, to make it hybrid. Sunsets on April 30th. There is talk, there's a proposal out there in a House bill that it continue the way it is through July 2023, so we just need to wait to see what happens. You know, the discussion for tonight can be something to just kind of decide if it does continue, and we do have the right to continue to have committee meetings virtually, is that something that the Board is interested in doing and continuing to move forward with? Currently, we have our instructional, our operational policy committee, those are virtual, some of our subcommittees, those are all virtual right now. Is that something the Board is interested in doing, if we have the possibility of doing that?
Thank you. I know I personally, and the virtual meetings have worked out really well for me. Does anyone want to chime in? Ms. Roscoe?
So, thank you. I also would just like to vote for those virtual meetings. I love that we come together for these monthly meetings, but in that, we all are very busy, and this is just, you know, one component, especially as a mom of two little ones. It allows me to have less guilt in some ways, and make me feel like I'm able to do a little bit more of everything. And so, of course, I will comply with whatever has to happen, but if I get to vote and put a star next to those virtual meetings, I absolutely would love to, because sometimes it's a little challenging getting out of the house. I do get away, but sometimes it's with a lot of tears, so that just adds to the guilt while I'm driving here.
Mrs. Regan?
Yeah, I would absolutely support continuing down the road that we are. In the workforce these days, we have seen a tremendous change in how we conduct ourselves. Even my own company that I work for has opted to let us be a hybrid model, which means we are working from home, and we are in the, in, in the office for a certain amount of time, and I don't see why that model would, it's been working for the last, you know, two years here. I don't see why we would want to change that. I think it's not only convenient for us as a Board member, but even for you guys here. It's a long day for you, and if you have the chance to go home and be with your families and maybe take that meeting from home, you know, we would certainly support that, so we understand that you guys work as hard as we do. So, we want to make sure that we are also mindful of your time. There is a work-life balance that I think we all try to achieve, and so, you know, any time that we can support that work-life balance, I would say we should do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ross?
Yeah, initially, when we first went to virtual meetings, I thought they were a terrible idea, because it, it didn't give the opportunity of the people to come and appear before us. And, but I'm looking around the auditorium now, and the last couple of meetings that we've had in here, and I'm sure most of the people out there in the public would agree with me, that, that we, virtual is the way to go, but I do like keeping this meeting.
Miss, I do agree. I think I can speak on behalf of the Central Office staff, that we do like the mix. I mean, it is nice to come together the, once a month and see everyone in person, but the virtual meetings have been lovely as well. To all of the points made already, the work-life balance has been nice. It affords all of us an opportunity to go home, have dinner with our families, and then get on the virtual meeting. So, it does take away some of that guilt, those of us, I have three myself, so I get it, all of us here have children as well. So, it is trying to find that balance. So, we do appreciate that as well, and that all of you recognize that as well, because it is a lot. It is a long day for us, as for you all as well. And, you know, the things I've read thus far, participation has increased. I think we do see more family members attend some of our meetings, attend the meetings, because they can have that balance, where their kids are with them home, they don't have to worry about babysitting, they don't have to leave the house and set up other things. So, it's a nice opportunity. So, hopefully, it will continue after April 30th. We shall soon see. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, for those that really feel strongly about it, you can write to the people that make the rules around here in this great state of Connecticut and voice your opinions. So, that is all I have for Instructional Committee. Ms. Raciou?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, our Operations Committee, Ms. Regan and Mrs. Castelli.
Good evening. So, the Operations Committee met on Monday, April 18th. We met virtually, and we discussed, we went through all of the committee reports and some of the highlights of that report. We did have a significant reduction in the surplus. We did take quite a hit. The surplus is at 454,000, which is a reduction of over 216,000, and that was due to an additional 200,000 contribution to the town for the health insurance fund, and we know that insurance has been a little crazy this, so that was the payment back, or that was the, to help that contribution. And then in that, we also discussed about the $100,000 for the food services, and if there is a surplus at the end of the year, about having that money come back to us. So, we are very pleased to see that the Food Services is doing so well, and that they've been able to stay afloat. So, it's, it's positive that they're actually might be able to give us some money back. As far as the transportation, we did go into a lot of detail and conversation about the transportation and the ongoing contract negotiations with specialty insurer, specialty bus, which is the, which was approved by the Town Council to give us a bid waiver, so that we are progressing with those conversations. We did talk about whether or not we wanted to add that one clause around the electric buses, and we did take consensus, and I think the consensus, the consensus was that we were not going to go back to the attorneys at this time, and I think the general feeling is that we have to get through this contract and get it done and get this, it was more of a time constraint, rather than adding some complexity to that conversation. It is something that we all felt strongly about, and that we do understand the importance of electric buses, but we also understand that we need to get this contract finalized and so that we could have a bus service start in the fall, so. And then, I think that was about all we did talk. We touched on some of the track and field requirements, and that the RFP is going out for the sheen truck. So, hopefully, that was with legal, and hopefully, that will be, there will be an update in the next one. And the meeting was adjourned at 7:13. Moving on to 13.2, I am going to turn that over to Mrs. Belizzi.
Thank you. So, this agenda item is for us to have a discussion regarding the number of overall slots that we have available for our students who would like to attend the ECA program at ACES. So, Mrs. Turner has spent some time discussing and updating our gifted and talented, and really our talented portion of identifying our students. So, this program is where students can attend this program for the arts, and so, right now, we currently have an overall allowance of 12 slots for our students, which sounds like a lot, but it depends and it varies on the number of allocations every year. And so, this year, in talking with ACES, when we look at the number of students every year for the past five years that have applied, the numbers are continuing to increase. So, we have more students that are applying for this program, and this year, we are at a high of 16 of our students applying to attend this program, which is higher than what we've had in the past. In the past, we've had seven students, prior year, we've had nine. They vary between seven and nine for the past five years, so this year being the highest. What has, what happens is, depending on when our students enter into these slots, they may stay there and enter in as a freshman, which means they stay then for all four years, which means each year, it's not the same number of openings for our students to take an available slot. It varies. So, for example, this coming, this current year, we only have one senior. So, next year, that would mean for our 16 students that apply, there is only one available slot open, which is very limiting. The rest of the students then would be placed on a waitlist. There is a cost. It's a minimal cost for us to send our students to attend the program, but there is a cost, so it is something to consider as well. But I did want to have a discussion in terms of just making you all aware of how many slots we have. I did have a conversation with ACES, saying we have to at least increase for this year at least four more slots, which would give us an opportunity of accepting five more students. But there is a discussion of, should we continue to increase that? The number of slots that we would increase every year would be something that we sort of have to guarantee year after year. So, if we increase it, I'm just making up a number, from 12 to 20, then we'd have to guarantee that every year, 20 students would be applying for this program and would accept attending the program. Based on our new protocols and based on the number of students that are interested, I do think 12, or as we are right now, at four, you know, adding four more is lower, but definitely wanted to have a discussion about it this evening.
This isn't me, sorry. Operations. Ms. Regan, this is your...
Oh, I'm sorry. You can call people. Mr. Vado?
What is the cost? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'm sorry, I apologize. It's $5,907 a student.
So, you are saying, though, that if we were to increase it to 20, we would have to continue with that number?
We would. We would have to continue. When I had, I've had multiple conversations with the folks over at ACES, and they are confident, based on the fact that our numbers continue to increase every year with our students that are interested and are getting accepted, that we would definitely meet that criteria. I, I just gave a number of 20, but we definitely would meet that criteria, so that then we wouldn't have as many on the waiting list. The hard part is, you know, they can apply, students can apply not only coming from the eighth grade to go into ninth grade, but they can, the slots also vary, because they can choose not to stay for all four years. If they are accepted, they can stay, they can apply in, you know, the 10th grade for their 11th and 12th grade years. So, the number of slots tends to vary just a little bit, so it's hard.
All right, so they're saying that if we say 20, they expect 20 each year following that, but if we don't have that number of kids, what do they do? Charge us for the extra? Because they don't do that with Wintergreen or Thames, they, you know...
Right. So, I think that would be something we'd have to have a further discussion with them about. I did probe that a little bit. We do not have a signed contract with them, so while we guarantee 12, that does not mean that we cannot add more every year. They sort of give us that flexibility, a little bit of a window of that. But I can understand from their purposes, for budgeting purposes, they would like a set number to start with.
All right, got you.
So, I did confirm that if we do have a, a set number of students on a waiting list, what does that mean? If we, you know, do we have the opportunity to continue to add this year? So, if I have a large number on the waiting list, can I continue to add? They said yes, we can.
See, my only, my only, to me, whatever we can offer kids to help them better their education in any way, shape, or form, we should spend the money to do it. However, I know the issue with Wintergreen, and other people can echo, I mean, you, we all have been through this, most of us. You know, when Wintergreen first opened up, it was, you know, there were certain things that attracted people to that school, longer day, everybody got a computer, a longer school year. Eventually, we did those things, so that's when the numbers started to go down. My, my question is, do you people who are, you know, oversee the whole thing here, do you feel that ECA will offer things that we cannot offer here? And if they do, are they that much better there than we can offer here? I mean, are you getting my drift here, what I'm trying to say?
I do. I do think they have a wide variety, a variety of opportunities for our students that they are enjoying, and that at this particular moment, maybe we cannot provide all of those, and so our students are attracted to that. And so, to your point earlier, to not provide them or afford them that opportunity to attend that, it's tough.
Hard decision to make.
It is a tough decision. It is. So, I agree.
Mr., are you, all right, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I just need to be educated here a little bit more. I, I understand that we're looking, and I agree that we should go for the 20 slots. I think the price is right, but I'm concerned about how, how they apply, because do we currently know who the students on the waiting list are? I understand we do not.
So, I was given a list on Friday of the students that are on the waiting list.
Okay, so we found out as of Friday. Now, normally, do we know that in advance?
So, we do. We do. We get notification. It goes to the buildings first, and then it comes to us.
I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this program. I, I know several students over the years who have taken it, they've taken the, the music program, the arts program, and gone on to college and been very successful in it. And the price, $5,907, I think is a bargain, and I'm in favor of buying all the slots we need.
So, I just want to, just say for the record, I just threw out a number just to have a discussion as to how many we want to increase it by. That is up to all of you as to the, you know, how far you want to increase it for every year. It's something just to think about. You know, I increased it to 16, so we have, you know, a total of 16, but I don't know if we want to add more than that, so something to think about.
I, I, my personal opinion again is, we, we need to add to bring it up to the 20.
Okay.
We're, we're only losing, we're only gaining one spot, because we only have one senior. Do you have any idea how many juniors we have in the program? Can you break that down for us?
Yes, I do have the breakdown. So, currently, we have, hold on one minute. We will have next year, looking at our list, it looks like next year, we'll have three 10th graders, then three 11th graders, and then five seniors. So, if you think that, you know, currently moving into the next year, we'd have five seniors, so anybody who applies the following year, that would be five slots that would be open.
All right, so if we add and bring it up to 20, we can get everybody who's on the waiting list right now? No?
No.
How many do we have to bring it up to to get everybody on the waiting list? How many do we have to bring it up to to get everybody on the waiting list?
So currently, I believe we have 11 on the waiting list.
All right. So we'd have to bring the total to what?
Right. But you have to remember, if we do that, then you're guaranteeing that number of spots for the following year. And you'd have to guarantee that all of those students would definitely accept it to go. So there's a couple of things that happen when they're on the waiting list. They could be on the waiting list, but they also have to still, we still need to know that they're going to accept to going, definitely for next year.
Hypothetically, if we have 11 students on the waiting list, who determines which student gets to go?
So they just go down, they go down the list, but then we'd have to decide, the student would have to decide if they definitely want to accept it or not. It's kind of like applying to multiple colleges, just because they get in doesn't mean they're definitely going to go either. So I don't want to say definitely say 11 more spots, and then we have to own 11 more spots. I would probably say maybe cut that in half. It would be something we'd have to take a look at. Because I don't know if they definitely would attend. That's what I'm trying to say.
But let's say five students apply and they're all freshmen, and there's only room for two.
Right, then three would be on the waiting list.
Who determines which of the first two they get offered? Is it a lottery?
Aces does that. Yeah, we do not do that.
It's first come, first served.
I don't know. They do that. I don't have any part in that. That's, Aces does that.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Aces does that. I do not do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Castelli?
Mrs. Belizzi, do you know, how are the kids told about this opportunity for ECA? How do they hear about it?
Through the guidance counselors at eighth grade, and I believe in high school as well.
Okay. And this is a part-time program, I believe, right? It's half-day?
Yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit? I mean, it's not every day, right?
I don't know the exact schedule, but I do believe it is every day that they attend classes.
Like half, the afternoons or something?
Yeah, they come back and forth. Correct.
And I do hear, if I remember correctly, when I was on the Aces board, they have a brand-new building.
Yes.
They moved. So I mean, I think it's a phenomenal opportunity for kids that are going. And what's the process for reducing the number of seats if we needed to? So for example, if we agreed to do 20, but then we found, oh, my gosh, we're way, you know, we ended up having to pay for, you know, X number of extra slots because we didn't have enough people interested, what, how do you get that number down?
Right. So we don't have any formal signed contract with them, so I think it would be more of a discussion that we're not receiving the applicants, and therefore, you know, going by the number of students that are interested, we're not going to continue. So it'd be something that I'd have to have a discussion with Aces about.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Daring?
Just a couple of quick questions. You had mentioned that the interest in this is increasing. What do you think is the reason for this increase? Do you know?
I would just assume that the students are interested in the programs that they offer in the arts and theater, and so this is something that's available to them and they'd like to try.
Okay. And you had mentioned that in previous years, we would have seven to nine interested per year. So if there are 12 spots, does that mean that we had unfilled spots in previous years?
No, that all the spots were filled. Every year, we've had students on the waiting list, every year. Moving forward, it just seems that the number is growing because the number of slots varies, available slots varies each year depending on what year the students are in.
So then where did that number, seven to nine, come from? Did I misunderstand something earlier?
So this year, we had 16 students apply. Last year, we had nine. The year before, we had seven. The year before, we had 11. Prior year, we had nine. So...
If we had like seven to 11 apply and 12 spots, doesn't that mean that some of the spots were filled?
Because it's, but you have to count the returning students.
Oh, okay.
So, right. So that even counts, not new spots every year, it's 12 overall. So if a student enters currently right now in the ninth grade, we're going to assume that they're going to stay for the remaining years of high school. So that slot is taken of the overall 12 spots.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So out of the 11 people on the waiting list right now, there's only room for one because we only have one senior graduating, correct?
It was 16.
It was 16. Out of the 16, we have room for...
We took one.
One. Okay. So then we were down to 15.
Right, right. So now we have...
So now we get four more. So now we're at 11, and that's the board discussion. Do we take it any lower than an 11 waitlist? Mr. Vado, did you have, you had your hand up?
So right now, Mrs. Belizzi feels like we could probably go from 12 to 16. So that would bring us down to 11. So now that's the discussion here at the board. Do we want to try to go and bring the 11 down lower? Historically, we've had waitlists between seven, nine, 11. That's where it's at. I do just want to share that I did speak with a parent whose child attended ECA, and she told me that it is a grueling program. It's not like you get out of school half a day and then just go to the Haven for the other half of your day. Students really do need to manage their time, manage coursework in both locations. Her daughter actually graduated from ECA with an art portfolio that got her into a school for architecture. And having another student who graduated from Sheehan, she felt strongly that without the ECA opportunity, she would not have been able to move into that type of an architecture program, given her special needs. And, you know, ECA afforded her that opportunity. So we do have great coursework in both high schools, but I look at ECA similar to like a CNA program or a manufacturing program. This is a pathway for students who really want to do work in the arts. So to the extent that we can let as many students go as possible without tying our hands for potentially a financial commitment if there aren't students in the future, it's very difficult because these opportunities, it's not a set number of students every year. You can have a ninth-grade student or an eighth grader apply, go in ninth grade, not like it, and drop. And then that's another one of the whatever number of seats is open. So we can't even say per class or per high school, we can give a certain number of students. It really fluctuates based on the talent of the eighth-grade class, because all these students have to apply. They all have to go through a rigorous process and do applications and get scored and whatnot to see if they even get accepted. So it's unfortunate that it's not as cut and dry for us as a board to say five or 10 or whatever, and then just divide it between the two schools because it is more complicated.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Okay, there we go. So I know a little bit, something about ECA. Some of you might know that I'm part of the Wallingford Community Theater here in town, and I've had the privilege of sharing the stage with many of the Wallingford children. And several of them have taken advantage of the ECA. And, you know, to see the looks on their faces when they get accepted is just, you can't put a price tag on it. And they've thrived in this program. So I would love to see as many students who want to be there get in. With that said, and P.S., it is a small price to pay. It's not very much money, and what they get out of it is so valuable, so valuable. But, you know, I do understand the budgetary concerns. What if, what if students, you know, what if someday, you know, we don't have everyone, everyone applying. So I do like the element of keeping it competitive. When you keep the slots competitive, the desire grows, right? If it's the psychology of, well, everybody gets in, then it's so easy to want to, when you're ready to quit and drop. So I like, I like the element of keeping it competitive, and then that way, the desire is there. But I, I'm in favor, whatever, whatever number we think we can afford, I would be in support of it.
Mr. Vado?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Is there, is there a dropout rate? I mean, most of the kids stay there for the whole, and is it primarily children going into ninth grade that go there? I mean, they don't usually go in their sophomore year.
It's rare that they do.
It's rare.
It's very rare.
I like the fact that they have to apply. Is it a rigorous process? I don't really know. I mean, do they really...
I believe it is, yes.
So basically, what we have to do is negotiate a contract with Aces as far as...
No, no, stay contractless.
I beg your pardon?
Stay without a contract. Why do we want a contract?
For the number...
It's not a contract.
Verbal agreement.
It's just a verbal agreement?
It's just a verbal agreement.
That's why you kept saying discussion.
Right. It's a verbal...
I thought we actually had something. Okay, so this verbal agreement could say that we can change the number of slots. That's what we have to hope for, I think, right?
Right. So it's pretty much right now that since I believe 2014, the research I've done, we've had a set number. And that's kind of something that they count on all the time. Then they put some of these students on a waitlist to let us know that this qualifies the set number. Then these are the students that are on a waitlist. Then they let us know around this time and let us know if we would like to, if we would like to pay for additional slots, we can. It's not like they're giving these slots away. It's just there. In the conversations having with Aces, you know, they do feel confident that since our numbers are continuing to go up and the interest is there, that whatever number we decide to sort of guarantee, I hate to say it like that, but guarantee for each year, we will probably have the interest. So...
And obviously, go ahead.
No, so I'm trying to find that, that balance of, you know, I would love to be able to offer it to everybody, but financially, you know, to try and guarantee that all the time. But knowing then that there are students that are still accepted and on a waitlist, and then we have the option of continuing to add what we feel is reasonable is nice as well.
We provide transportation.
Mm-hmm.
So from both high schools.
Correct.
One bus, I would imagine.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a cost for that.
It is a mini-bus. So we also want to think about that.
That's another cost. Okay.
Mr. Ross?
My understanding is we currently have 16 seats. We had added one a year or two ago. Let's get 16. If we want all the people to go, then we're going to have to have 27 seats available to us. And I'll be honest with you, at the price, it's a bargain. I mean, there's, these students don't get the opportunity to get the education and move ahead any other way but this. And I know, like I say, several students, and it's a caseload. It's a lot of work, but they all do it. They love doing it, and they've all benefited immensely from it. And I just think whatever we can, you know, it's $5,700 a student plus transportation, but the buses are going down there now. Do we use a small bus? I assume, yeah, okay. I'm all in favor of as many as we can get. Now, I'm assuming these, the waiting list students have passed all the thing. It's just a matter of a spot opening up for them to have it. So we've got 11 students who have passed all the tests, and they're waiting to go. So if we can increase it, I don't want to increase it two or three. I don't think that's fair to anybody. We need to increase it as many as we think we can see fit. We're talking $50,000, $60,000 on an $11 million budget.
Mrs. Castelli?
So I agree with you, Mr. Ross. I would like to see as many students go as possible. However, we do have to consider the financial impact. I know it's only round number 6,000 a student, but when you start adding that up, and this is part of our sustained budget, not part of our strategic budget, we have to realize right now for this coming year, we were given by the mayor, 2.98, which is exactly what our current sustained budget is. So where are these extra 6,000 times X number of kids going to come from? I mean, yes, we have contingency. Yes, we typically end up with unencumbered funds, but we should not be balancing our budget based on what-ifs.
Mr. Daring?
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask Mrs. Belizzi if she's got any comments about that.
I don't, I don't disagree. I do think, you know, we are fortunate. I was going to talk about that in a little bit, that we were funded our sustained. And so, you know, it's a hard decision. I'm not going to lie. I think 12 is a little low. To come somewhere in the middle, I think, is great. I do think it needs to be something that is competitive. It is an add to the budget that we really do need to think about, 27 slots at, you know, and it's not all financial, and I understand that, but we have to balance the both. And then it just worries me to maintain that. It does make me a little nervous. I'm going to be honest. So, you know, and then thinking if we increase that, we have to increase transportation because we cannot fit them all on the, again, all things that are doable, if that's the route we go, just trying to, you know, provide the bigger picture, both of, you know, providing the opportunity for all of our students and the financial cost to the budget as well. Again, it's not something we have to decide right now. It's something to think about. We can bring it back up and put it on the operations agenda when we meet again. Just something to kind of think about. Doesn't have to be decided today. It can be something after when we're discussing the rest of the budget, that this is something that we keep in mind and in the back of our heads. I do not think, you know, the slots will go away at this particular moment. So it is something for us to kind of just keep in our mind and provide, I just wanted to provide you with all the information and things that have been presented to me thus far.
Mr. Daring?
Thoughts?
Just one question. I'd be curious. Do you happen to have statistics offhand as to what these students end up doing after they graduate from the program? Do they go on to do other things relating to what they studied at the program?
I don't have that offhand. I can look into that for you and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Ratchey?
Do we know, I guess it's hard to tell because the amount of eighth graders who apply every year varies. But do we know out of the 11 who are still waitlisted, if they are going to go? If there's a spot, we don't know. Or if guidance, sometimes students apply to see if they can get in.
Yeah, I don't know. I can try and find that information. I'm not sure. Our guidance counselors will definitely know.
Okay.
But, yeah.
And my other only comment related to the, Mrs. Castelli, your concern over the budget is, I just want to be fair too. And I'm not suggesting anybody doesn't, but we have three STEP teachers from the elementary through middle school who service our gifted and talented population. So I think if we consider the cost of their salaries and benefits, how does that equate to our two high schools? How are we, I know there's AP classes and opportunities there, but how are we addressing the needs of our talented students equally throughout the entire district? And I think that's kind of when I pause and I think about that and the opportunities in-house that our gifted and talented students have through STEP. And then this is kind of the opportunity for those talented students at the high school level to spread their wings. And if they're talented enough to get into a school like that, I want to do everything we can to support them.
Mr. Vado?
When do we have to make a decision? Like, when do you have to let them know how many we're sending?
So, you know, sooner rather than later in terms of, not, it doesn't have to be tonight. I would think after, once we finalize the budget towards the end of May, I would say. But I think, you know, in, right now, our students are currently picking their classes in their high schools and setting up their schedules to be successful for ninth grade, whether it be Martician or Lyman Hall. So this, you know, this does impact that a little bit as well, because they're all, you know, they're kind of having their mindset of this is where they're going to be, and then this opportunity. Not to say that we can't make the changes that they need as well, because we can, but just something to think about timeline-wise.
Maybe Dominic can answer this. What is the projected amount of money in contingency next year? Do we know that?
Can you use the mic, Mr. Brown? The light's flashing at me.
Sorry, they weren't sharing with me. We have $498,000, I believe, in the contingency budget for next year. But we're not sure what our budget's going to look like till...
I know.
But that's what's in...
I'm happy it's that number. But okay, thank you.
And this is a special education, this would come out of special education budget. So we do also have the 2% special education. I know it's not sustained, but we do have...
And that's what, two...
647, off the top of my head.
So can we...
There you go.
I think part of what's going to, I think we need to get our final budget, first of all. So I would say if you could provide some of the answers... So I would say if you could provide some of the answers to the questions that were provided for tonight, if you can, right? Give us as much of an update, right? And I understand that the, you know, we do, that the students are gonna be choosing, but I think if we can put this on the agenda for the next operations meeting to see if by then we will have, because we've changed the date, we will have our budget. And then I think that will give us a clearer idea of what we have, and then think about how many we want to add. Now, as much as I would love to see 27 students go, I don't think we can sustain that year after year. I do like the idea of keeping it competitive because, you know, I applied to four different colleges. I knew I got into, you know, X number of them, and I would think that would be the expectation. You are applying to go to a school. The expectation is not always there that you will succeed in being able to go for any number of reasons, whether it's you're waitlisted or you just didn't get in. So I do think that it, keeping it a little competitive kind of gives people a little drive. Get those applications in as soon as possible. I have come, you know, we've seen people sit on these things, right? And they're like, they're waiting to the last minute to get applications in, and, you know, you're last to the table. So, you know, I think if we can keep it competitive and, you know, make a compromise where we can at least increase our number, and then we watch, and then we say, okay, well, this did, it worked, and we had enough. I would rather continue to keep adding than have them to pull back.
And I don't disagree. I can, we can definitely add it to the operations meeting, and I can provide you all with the information that I have in the Friday update, so you have the concrete facts in front of you and the numbers and how the breakdown is for the available slots, absolutely, on Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? No, all right, we will then move on.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan and Mrs. Castelli. And to Superintendent Belizzi, I know this has taken up a lot of your time in the past couple days as it all kind of unfolded after the ACES meeting on Thursday. So thank you for getting it on tonight's agenda, even knowing that there wouldn't be any action. But I feel like the board is informed and kind of, we know if people are coming up to us and ask us, you know, why is my child waitlisted or, or what is happening with ECA? We, we can answer more about that now, so thank you very much. Item number 14 on our agenda is new business, and we do, we just, I guess, covered new business. 15 is our administration report. Back to you, Mrs. Belizzi.
Yes, I just wanted to provide just a few updates. I know we shared a lot of what's been happening this past month. It's been a busy month. We did have our spring break in the middle of that as well. But last Wednesday night, we did have the opportunity, myself, Mr. Barone, Mrs. Raciio, Mr. Bondi, to attend the town council meeting. Mr. Daring, thank you for sitting with us as well, and we had central office there supporting us to provide our budget. So we've mentioned some of this already, but, you know, we did go in with our proposed budget insurance. The health insurance did change what it was going to look like. It was an increase from 8% to 12.8%, which did make a big impact to our budget of approximately $707,000 or $17,000, which was a good amount. The mayor did recommend, you know, funding us for our sustained, which is fantastic. So, you know, hopefully after the presentation, that will continue, and we'll have to wait to see what happens with town council and what the final budget number is, which should be May 10th, we should hear that number, which will then give us an opportunity to take a look at what we want to do moving forward as a board and have a discussion after that. So I know we did discuss a little earlier moving some of those dates around so that we have the final date and we can discuss it at our operations. So it was a very successful meeting. The questions were very good, and, you know, I think everyone did a wonderful job preparing, and it was a successful evening. Mr. Bondi did a great job as well presenting the cafeteria budget, and so we'll wait to see what happens with that. So that was our big thing for the month. The other piece was the bid waiver for the buses, so we are appreciative of that. We are moving forward. We are still in contract negotiations, hopefully to have some more things finalized by, I know Mr. Barone is working very hard on this, hopefully very shortly. So then we will be back to visit and have an executive session to discuss some of that further details moving forward. So stay tuned for more information with that. And the last thing I just want to mention is we did get some information from the state regarding the increase in our COVID numbers. So all numbers throughout the state are starting to increase. I'm sure many people have seen it on the news. For these past three days as a district, we're up to 25 new cases already today. Mrs. Nealon had shared that with me, so that is on the rise. The state has just shared with us to remind everybody again of all of our current mitigation strategies that we have in place, that masks are still optional moving forward, but, you know, to remember to stay home when you're sick and to follow all those protocols as we have, to seek testing and let the office know if, you know, the nurses know if you are positive, if you're a staff member, if a student tests positive. We're still continuing to monitor that and have to report it to the state. So we're just gonna continue to watch the numbers and see how things go moving forward. So just want to remind everybody of that. To that point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Thompson, who's gonna share some updates in the personnel office.
Thank you, Mrs. Belizzi. We have some good news to share, as you know. Last week, we hire, had an administrative hire, the coordinator for CTE, David Ullman, will be joining our team. He is currently working in a similar position as a teacher leader in Meriden, and we feel like he's gonna be a really good fit, so I want to thank the board for participating in both the first and third round of the process and to all the members of the stakeholder committee, which included teachers and administrators in vetting some very qualified candidates. So we were not only excited to welcome Mr. Ullman, but also to know that there's a lot of leadership out there, so candidates with a lot of good credentials, so we're excited about that. Also, just to let you know, it is job fair season as our soon-to-be graduates be, soon-to-become teachers, so we are participating. The personnel office has attended a major recruiting fair at the University of Connecticut a couple weeks ago as well. I was at a virtual fair for Central Connecticut State University, and will continue to be working with different universities to try to meet some of the needs in various potential areas for hiring, including special education, which is a shortage area around the state. I have had, recently had a meeting with Quinnipiac University, which is starting a new program in conjunction with the state. There'll be more information from Quinnipiac after June 1st, where they'll be doing an alternative route to certification, similar to an intern teacher-in-residence-type program. So we're exploring those options as well, so we're looking at all possible avenues as we get ready for our hiring season. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Thompson. In the curriculum office, a reminder to all the public, we do have an early release day this week for teacher professional development. We are starting to wrap up some of our goals from this year. We have several of our consultants in the district this week, especially in the area of mathematics. The board will receive a full outline of all the professional development opportunities that were offered in the weekly update on Friday. Many of our elementary schools, or the 3-5 schools, rather, started SBA testing this week, so we are in the middle of smarter balance testing and GSS testing. It'll take place over the course of the next several weeks. So the students are actively engaged in the assessments in the morning, and then they have a different schedule throughout the rest of the day so that all content areas are still touched outside of the testing windows. And just to piggyback a little bit off of Dr. Thompson, I'm super excited to have Mr. Ullman join our team in the curriculum office. He has showed, has shown such a passion and enthusiasm for CTE. I am meeting with him tomorrow, and I look forward to beginning the conversation of where we go as a district in the area of CTE through the middle school and high school.
Thank you all, those were great updates, and we're making some great progress on filling positions, so that hopefully will lighten the load as we head into the summer. Moving on to Section 16, announcements. We have a few things here. On Monday, May 2nd, we will have our instructional committee meeting. We will have on Monday, the 16th, that is a change from our normal ti, our normal day of the month. We will have the operations committee meeting. As was mentioned earlier, we are moving operations until after the town council takes action on the town's budget so that we have a firm number to work with, and we have an approved number from the council. Right now, both of those meetings are hopefully going to happen via Google Meet at 6:00 p.m. That remains to be seen. If, Mrs. Belizzi, if we do not have an update on the state for Monday's meeting, I'm hoping that you will let us know that we need to drive to 100 South Turnpike and greet you there so that we, we find where we're going. We also have some special board meetings next month. We will have Monday, May 9th as a special board of education meeting, and Wednesday, May 11th, and those are for interviews for administrative positions. After that, we will have our regular scheduled meeting on Monday, May 23rd, here at Robert F. Presey Town Council, Town Council Chambers at 6:30 p.m. And unless there's any other comments for the good of the order, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.